Our guest today is Cook County Board President. She has served in this position for four and a half years. She is a frequent attendee at city club events for which we are enormously grateful. She got her bachelor's and master's degree at the University of Chicago. Ladies and gentlemen, Cook County Board President Tony Preckwinkle.
First of all, I want to thank Jay. You know, this enterprise is immensely important to our democracy. It gives everybody a chance to hear from elected officials and business leaders and cultural leaders, and it's a real service to all of us here in Chicago. So, thank you, Jay. We appreciate it. And while I'm thanking folks, let me begin by thanking our commissioners who are here. I think Commissioner Deborah Sims came in after the introductions. Commissioner Sims? I want to thank all our commissioners, all our union leaders, and my staff for joining us, especially Kim Fox, my chief of staff, Tasha Cruzat, my deputy chief of staff. And I also want to acknowledge Ivan Samstein and his smart and talented finance team. So, I'm very grateful. I'm also grateful for the other staff who are here, and I won't start acknowledging you because they'll forget somebody, and then I'll be in big trouble. I'm not going to pretend that I don't know why you're all here this morning at this early hour on a lovely summer day. But let me be upfront by saying that there's more to today's agenda than the headline news. I'm here today to talk about the county's finances, both our immediate challenges and our plan for long-term financial sustainability. Before I discuss our plans to ensure long-term financial health of our county, it's important to talk about the hard work and hard choices we've made over the last four years to improve our operations, strengthen our services, and rebuild faith in Cook County government. I know that our budget process doesn't stir much excitement or inspire press buzz, but that doesn't make it any less important. Having come into office facing a roughly half a billion-dollar deficit and no budget plan or process in place, we've worked to make our budget process more transparent. We've passed five budgets, closed over 1.4 billion in deficits. We've cut costs, streamlined government operations, and improved services. This is a reflection of the ingenuity and creativity of our solutions, as well as the process that we've put in place to identify and implement these solutions. So first off today, I want to lay out our preliminary budget forecast for fiscal year 2016. Our projected general operating funds deficit for fiscal year 2016 is 198.9 million. Now, I don't know why we just don't say 199, but anyway. While it's almost $300 million less than the one we faced coming into office, we knew and we know that we're facing significant challenges. Actually, in my budget address in fiscal year 2015, I acknowledged that we were headed toward a very difficult year. Our basic obligation, the obligation of government at every level, is twofold: to provide good services and to do so as effectively and efficiently as possible. When we came into office, we laid out four guiding principles: fiscal responsibility, innovative leadership, transparency and accountability, and improved services. I know this causes my finance team to wince, but balancing the budget is not a goal in and of itself. It's the first step in establishing a set of strategies upon which to transform government. And now, as we gear up for our sixth budget cycle, hard to believe, I'm proud of the progress we've made. It should come as no surprise that the county's largest expenditure is personnel. Eighty percent of the county general fund is personnel. Our employees are our greatest resource. Cook County provides a range of critical services, from healthcare to public safety, from animal control to the medical examiner's office. Cook County employees are doctors and nurses, lawyers and engineers, scientists, researchers and analysts. And that doesn't include the countless individuals without impressive titles who are responsible for ensuring that our operations continue to run smoothly. We're the fourth-largest employer in the state. For five years, I've talked about responsibility and reform in Cook County government, and our good workforce makes it possible. We also have to be sure that we're living within our means. We continue to make strategic, structural changes to make sure that our personnel costs are appropriate. Today, we have a smaller, stronger government than when I took office. We've reduced the number of budgeted positions by 2,000. In the fiscal year 2015, the county workforce was eight percent lower than it was the day I took office in December of 2010. Additionally, we took steps in the last round of our labor negotiations to call for increased contributions for health benefits for our employees, as well as necessary concessions in our health plan design. Our expenditure supports not only personnel, but our policy agenda. As president, I've always had a strong belief in what Cook County can and should do, but you need technology to do any of it. Now, this is not exactly a language I'm fluent in. I will confess that I do not have a computer on my desk, but even I know that Cook County was behind the times. My staff likes to say that we were an eight-track in an iPod world. So I knew we'd have to make investments in technology across the county. In the last two years, we've invested $83 million in technology to allow us to better serve our residents, reduce costs, and deliver our policy goals. For fiscal year 2016, we're projecting an additional 7.4 million in operating costs that support technology improvements. This summer, we will begin to implement a new case management system for our public defender's office. We want our public defenders to be able to effectively manage their caseloads, as well as ensure that all their case information is stored electronically in a secure environment. This new system will also generate important information that will allow better case management and attorney assignments. We're also implementing a new data management system for all our public safety actors. Each agency has its own technology systems. Many of these systems are outdated and making it difficult to share information about defendants across agencies, such as charges filed, next court date, or where the defendant is housed in the jail. Our new system will make sharing that information much easier. Our public safety agenda, however, goes far beyond improved technology. By now, most of you have heard me speak about the county jail. You've heard the disturbing facts: only 10% of the people in our jail are serving a sentence; 90% of the people in Cook County jail are awaiting trial. Of that 90%, 70% are accused of nonviolent offenses. And what's troubling is that while African-Americans and Latinos make up 50% of the county population, they make up 85% of the people in our county jail. I always say that our jails sit squarely at the intersection of racism and poverty. Thousands of individuals, primarily people of color, are confined, not because they're convicted of a crime — remember, they're awaiting trial — but simply because they cannot afford their bail. And that's why one of my primary goals as president has been to reduce the overreliance on pretrial detention for nonviolent offenders. We've made incredible progress in this front. For 24 years, the average jail population was around 10,000 people on a daily basis. This time, two years ago, the daily population was 9,900. Today, it's approximately 7,800, lower than it's been since 1991. This has been accomplished by focusing on the bond court process, the port of entry into the jail. And by the way, I'm exceedingly grateful to Justice Burke for her leadership in our Justice Advisory Council. We couldn't have made the progress that we have in criminal justice reform without her support. Thank you, Ann. And it was the Justice Advisory Council that began the work on looking at bond court and trying to figure out how we could make improvements there. We've been moving away from a cash bond system by working with judges in bond court to provide them with better and more complete information about the people appearing before them. Cash bonds should only be used as a last resort, as a tool in the case where a defendant is at risk of reoffending or missing court appearances. In the last year, over half of those who came through bond court were granted noncash releases, released on their own recognizance, given electronic monitoring, compared with less than 20% two years ago. And during this time, we've seen no percentage increase in failures to appear in court or the percentage of people on pretrial supervision who were arrested for new offenses. We're building on this work by launching a new risk assessment tool in Central Bond Court this week. The research shows that holding low-risk defendants in detention is not only costly, but leads to worse outcomes. Detention, even for short periods of time, destabilizes low-level defendants, increasing their risk to reoffend. In order to continue this work, we have to ensure that there are sufficient alternatives to detention in place. In the last two years, we've invested $8 million into alternatives, such as electronic monitoring. This year, we're continuing this commitment, especially in the juvenile center, because we know that young people who are detained in the juvenile temporary detention center are more likely to end up in jail as an adult. And now, we're seeing declines in the jail population. It's our responsibility to make sure that there's a similar decline in the costs of operating the jail. Maintaining the jail is incredibly expensive. Every year, taxpayers in Cook County spent $511 million to operate our jail and about $71 million to operate our juvenile temporary detention center. I want to thank Sheriff Dart, who's committed to driving down the cost of operating the jail campus. We've begun the process of demolishing four buildings and divisions. This will save us $10 million a year and allow us to avoid $120 million over the next 10 years in repair and maintenance costs. We'll continue to work with the sheriff to drive down his overtime and personnel costs to be sure they're in line with the size of the facility and the number of people housed. One of the most important investments we make in our community is public health. Historically, the Cook County Health and Hospital System has spent over $500 million annually on uncompensated care, charity care. Before I took office, Cook County Government provided roughly $400 million of that total. We've decreased that by $225 million. Thanks to the Affordable Care Act, the great leadership of Dr. Shannon and Hill Hammack, chairman of our board, we're moving towards long-term financial sustainability for our system. But even more importantly, we're providing people with better care. We've built a system focused on preventive care, providing our patients, many for the first time, with a primary care doctor responsible for their wellness. Today, Cook County is one of the largest Medicaid expansion programs in the country. We have over 180,000 people in our county care program, including 10,000 members who have come through the jail. We've laid the foundation for a healthcare network that is more responsible to both patients and taxpayers. We can't discuss expenditures without also discussing revenues. For 2016, we're seeing decreases in a few specific revenue sources which make up half of the $198.9 million gap. One of the issues is the cost of our elections, and in a presidential year, that's $23 million, which we can't then spend out of our property tax pool. There's also an increase in the legacy debt service payments of $25 million. And it's disturbing to note, as Ivan tells me, we have twice the debt of Los Angeles County, which is twice as big as we are. So we've had some problems historically in assuming debt, which we have to deal with now. We also see a decrease in fees associated with the clerk of the court. The clerk's revenue in turn has had a ripple effect throughout the system. This is a major component of the $33 million year-end gap for this year, as well as a key driver in the revenue projections for next year. We've asked the county auditor to conduct a full audit of the clerk's operations and revenue projections. But I know those aren't the revenues you came to hear about. You've heard my proposal to increase the sales tax. This is particularly difficult for me. I would argue that there's no person in Cook County more hesitant to increase the sales tax than me. But here's the truth: I'm here to do what's right for Cook County, and what may be personally or politically awkward for me is irrelevant. I've always said that as an elected official, it's not enough to do the right thing. You have to explain it to the widest audience possible, and that's why I'm here today. Our proposed sales tax increase is a plan for our long-term financial sustainability. It's targeted to three specific areas. First, it will allow us to address legacy debt service payments. Next year, there's a $25 million increase in required debt service payments. In comparison, in 2008, when the sales tax was previously raised, there was no plan to address the $100 million in debt service payments on the horizon, no plan at all. Secondly, it will allow us to establish a long-term commitment to our infrastructure. Over the last two decades, our motor fuel tax dollars have been partially diverted to support public safety. In 2016, we'll begin to decrease that diversion so that by 2017, two years from now, all the motor fuel tax funds will be allocated to the Department of Transportation and Highways for infrastructure improvement projects. John Yonan is very happy today. Furthermore, we will soon be releasing our long-range transportation plan, the first the county has produced in over 70 years, which lays out a multimodal model for residents of our county and the county's plans to address them. So I will tell a quick story here. We changed our highway department to the Department of Transportation and Highways to make ourselves eligible for federal transportation dollars. And they said, "That's not good enough. You can't just change the name. You also have to have a transportation plan." So I said, "Okay, let's find the last transportation plan and update it and give it to the federal government." John and his staff looked carefully and long. They finally found one behind a filing cabinet from 1940. That was the last plan that the county had done around its transportation needs. So that's disturbing, but what you should know is that plan included a plan for all of the highways in Cook County, all of which were subsequently built almost exactly to the plan. Thirdly, almost 90% of our sales tax increase is dedicated to solving the county's pension crisis. With these three challenges factored in, our gap grows to $479 million, and that's why we need the sales tax. It's impossible to explain the present or plan for the future without first addressing the past. I know this is true as a history teacher, and I know it's true as an elected official. Five years ago, during my first budget as president, I committed to decreasing the sales tax. Even facing half a billion-dollar deficit, I knew that county operations could run more effectively and efficiently. In addition to making strategic cuts in expenditures, our workforce and budgeted positions, we implemented the first county-wide performance management initiative, working with our senior leadership to set clear county-wide goals by which we could hold ourselves accountable. As a result, we've created a data-driven decision-making process. At the same time, we were able to return $1.5 billion to county residents. I say all this to highlight the work we've done, not only by me, but by my staff, the Board of Commissioners, and the separately-elected officials of Cook County. It's also to draw an important distinction. This is not about a quick fix. This is not an operational stopgap. And contrary to what you may have heard, this is not an "I told you so." When the sales tax was increased in 2008, it was used entirely, entirely, to balance the budget and grow daily operations, including funding for healthcare benefits, supporting the hospital system, covering the costs of the juvenile temporary detention center, and replacing other declining revenues. The challenges have not changed; our approach has. We've continued to try to increase efficiency, streamline operations, and shift resources to better support our agenda. And it was far from easy, and this year will be even tougher. We must remain vigilant, and that's why I'm targeting at least $100 million in expenditure reductions in this year's budget, on top of the $465 million that we've cut over the last four years. Knowing the challenges ahead, we've already envisioned solutions, working with our Cook County Health and Hospital System to further reduce its tax allegation, targeting vacant positions, and reducing our real estate footprint by consolidating warehouses, downtown office space, and lease space. I know that some of you are still wondering why this revenue source and why right now. First, let me explain why we're proposing the sales tax. There are two large generators capable of addressing the scope of these challenges. These are the property tax and the sales tax. I spoke with each member of our Board of Commissioners personally, and it was quite clear that there were simply no votes — I repeat that, no votes — for a property tax increase. Beyond political reality, a property tax increase would be devastating to regions of our county, such as the South Suburbs, whose commercial and industrial base has eroded, and residents are now paying a disproportionately high property tax rate in comparison to other parts of the county. Second is the question of timing. We're acting today because Springfield didn't. After five years of demanding fiscal responsibility, two years of working with our unions to devise a comprehensive reform plan — many of our union leaders are here today, and I want to thank them for their help and support in working out our pension reform. We made many, 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 many trips to Springfield, and we can no longer wait for their action. In the absence of pension reform, the county will need an additional $270 million in funding. Our financial team looked at what was the minimum payment that would solve the $6.5 billion unfunded pension liability within a generation, while seeing payments grow no greater than 2% in the coming years. We literally can't afford to wait. For every month without pension reform, we fall $30 million further behind, $30 million, almost $1 million a day. If we wait another year, we'll also incur another $360 million in obligations. I appreciate that Governor Rauner has expressed to the Chicago Tribune his willingness to support our pension plan, but that isn't a guarantee. And while I'm willing to work with the governor and the legislature to secure pension reform, I refuse to wait and kick the can down the road toward bankruptcy. I will make this commitment: if Springfield can pass a pension reform, our pension reform bill before the end of the summer, we will reevaluate our revenue needs and make the appropriate changes to our sales tax levy in our September board meeting. We must still meet the Illinois Department of Revenue's October 1 deadline in order to ensure implementation at the beginning of the year. And let me explain: there are only two options for implementation, January 1 and July 1. We cannot wait until July 1 to meet our fiscal obligations. This isn't posturing or political maneuver. This is being realistic about the tough choices and difficult calls we need to ensure long-term health and stability of our county government. Thank you.
Raise your hand. Don't be shy. If you have a question, young people here will take them up here. Write them out. I think you really got them.
They're astonished or appalled. I don't know.
I don't know, one or the other. Sometimes silence is golden. No questions? I think it's either Clayton Smith or Emmett Whelan. Don't ask me. No questions?
I can't believe it. Come on.
Oh, how do these people work for you? I have a question, unwritten out.
Christine has a question. Christine Boardman. Service Employees Union were very grateful for her leadership, particularly around pension reform. Thank you.
Thank you.
We brought our pension bill to the legislature.
I want you to repeat the question.
I'm sorry. We have a supermajority, Democrats, that is, in both the House and the Senate. Why can't we pass our pension bill? Last year, when we brought our pension bill after two years of hard work with our union leaders to Springfield, we secured passage in the Senate with 34 Democratic votes and two Republicans. I am grateful to Pam Althoff and Karen McConaughey, the two Republicans in particular, and of course, all the Democrats who supported us. We went to the House, and the speaker made it quite clear that he wanted Republican votes on the bill, in the same way that there were Republican votes on Senate Bill 1. So we worked to try to secure that support. However, the Republican nominee at that time was not interested in our pension reform bill and made it known to Leader Durkin that that was the case, and we could not get any Republican votes. And although it came out of committee, it didn't ever go to the floor. So this year, when we went down to Springfield, we started in the House, and again, it passed out a committee on a party-line vote, was not brought to the floor because it did not have any Republican support. And again, the governor had made it clear to Republicans that he was not in favor of our pension reform plan. He has suggested to me in conversation that if I were willing to support his turnaround agenda, he might have a different view. I can't support his turnaround agenda. We'll see what happens. I'm hopeful that there will be action in Springfield, but as I said in my remarks, we're going to do what we have to do with the county, and if we get help in Springfield, I'm very grateful, but we're going to try to do what we have to do, given the fact that we have worked for two years with our unions and for the last year and a half with the state legislature to try to get something done. And let me just say, the state legislature has known for a long time that this pension crisis was coming and has not acted. And that's troubling to me.
We have a question, but it's not on what President Preckwinkle talked about. So I'll ask my question, and then if he wants to answer the one not dealing with topic today. Long-term planning in this county or in the city, heck, within the state, has always been an oxymoron. Will, if this passes, if you get the Big Nine, preferably 11...
Yes, that would be good.
Yeah. Been around a while. Is that really going to, unless something drastic happens, would be, shall we say, a ceasefire on any future tax increases?
I'd be foolish to promise that we're never going to increase taxes once we do this, but as I said, our smart and talented financial team tells us that this enables us to address our pension crisis and the other two substantive issues, stop diversion of our motor fuel tax money, use it for infrastructure as intended, and pay our rising debt service costs. So I have great confidence in Ivan and his team, and that's what they've shared with me. I have no way to predict what else might come at us down the road, so I surely can't make that promise.
Before we have another question, who's this guy Ivan? Let him stand up. You keep... There he is.
So Ivan is our pride and joy, our chief financial officer, and he came to us from Bank of America, and I want you to know served two tours of duty in Afghanistan, so we're grateful to him.
No pressure on you at all, Ivan. Okay, Tom Donovan has a question.
Commissioner Sims, break down on the sales tax dollars today and what tax entities get what percentage of income.
I should ask Ivan for this. I think it's six and three-quarters percent goes to the state. Why don't you stand up and tell us, Ivan? So the question was, how does the property... How does the sales tax presently break down? So it's mostly the state, six and a quarter percent for the state. It's also the city, the RTA, and the county.
We have another question on a different topic. You ready to take it? This is from Rebecca... Rebecca, how do you say your last name?
She, I think.
Okay. Illinois Business Immigration Coalition. Cook County is home to the third-largest immigrant population in the country. What is your strategy to provide healthcare for the undocumented?
So I usually say that in passing the Affordable Care Act, they made a bargain with the devil, and that bargain was to exclude the undocumented. The only way they felt they could get the Affordable Care Act passed was to exclude the undocumented, and as I said, in my view, that's a bargain with the devil. Now, our health and hospital system has always served whoever comes to the door. In the past, we'd even ask if you had insurance, which might have been a smart thing to do, but anyway, we served whoever came to the door. We did not ask people about their citizenship. We did not ask people about their income. We did not ask people if they were insured. We will continue, as we always have in the past, to serve the undocumented. They are part of our community. As Dr. Raju, Dr. Shannon's predecessor, used to say, "You want everybody in your community to have good access to healthcare, because the community as a whole needs to be healthy for you to be in good health." And so you want everybody. That means the people who work in this restaurant. That means the people who ride the bus with you, the people who serve you in the retail establishments, people who might not have insurance, might not be documented. You want them to have good healthcare. And we, as a county, have always provided, have always been an open door to people who needed access to healthcare. We'll continue to be that open door. We did not ask people if they were insured. We will continue, as we always have in the past, to serve the undocumented. They are part of our community. As Dr. Raju, Dr. Shannon's predecessor, used to say, "You want everybody in your community to have good access to healthcare, because the community as a whole needs to be healthy for you to be in good health." And so you want everybody. That means the people who work in this restaurant. That means the people who ride the bus with you, the people who serve you in the retail establishments, people who might not have insurance, might not be documented. You want them to have good healthcare. And we, as a county, have always provided, have always been an open door to people who needed access to healthcare. We'll continue to be that open door.
Madam President, this is the last question, and it's a typical city club question, because you always got to have, even with Trump yesterday, you got to have a city club question. This is from Philip Nelson. Philip, where are you? All right. You have no way to run now, just so you know. You're in the middle. "Is it possible to raise sales taxes in more affluent areas of the county and not in the areas of lower income?" You can knock that out of the park.
I'm afraid there has to be a uniform sales tax in the entire county. Let me just say, I mean, to go back to the property tax question, you know, we have, as in the country, we have great inequality in the county, and there are parts of the county where the commercial-industrial tax base has so eroded that the entire property tax burden is on residents, and those are communities in which, as Commissioner Simms said, many times people pay more in taxes than they do on their mortgage. So we went to the sales tax, first of all, because I saw a path to getting the votes there, but also because the property tax was so problematic, given the inequality in our county. Again, I want to thank you all for coming this morning. I hope for your support.
Tony, you got to get your mug.